Hi, everybody. If you can go ahead and take your seats. We'll start in just a few seconds if we can, because I know we have limited time in here. And I want everybody to get a chance to talk if they so choose. Well, we are going to have sort of a -- well, hi, everybody. I'm Kelly Ward, your Arizona State Senator for our Legislative District 5, representing most of Mojave County and all of La Paz County. And I'm glad to see so many people here who are very concerned about our air, water, and soil quality in our district and in our state and in our country. And so I appreciate you all being here. Our agenda tonight is basically going to be hello, say hello. These nice ladies are going to introduce themselves and tell you a little bit about them. We're going to have ADEQ, which is the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, give a presentation about air and water and soil quality here. Then we're going to give the public a chance to do some public testimony or public discussion. I just want you all to know that this is an informational meeting and an educational meeting. It's not going to be -- there's not going to be a lot of action at this meeting. It's going to be for both sides to kind of get the information out that you want each other to know. I know, you know, you guys have probably seen some of the things in the newspapers in Lake Havasu and Kingman. I'm not sure if there was anything in Bullhead or not about the meeting. But I will say, you guys, you know, the people who are concerned about this are -- I did describe you as relentless, and that's not a bad thing to be. And it's not a good thing for me as an elected representative, an elected senator, to ignore what many people in my district are concerned about. And so I do want to bring together you all with people who have expertise from the state level to try to give some education, to give some perspective from both sides, so that we can then move forward if there's something that Arizona can actually do to address your concerns. I'm not sure that there is anything that Arizona can do, but it's good to get the information out. I know all of you are going to behave, and everybody's going to be on their best behavior tonight. Don't make me gavel you down, because you guys know I will. So with that, I'm going to let these two great ladies who came, you know, drove all the way up here from Phoenix to talk to you guys, introduce themselves, and then you guys can go right into your presentation if you'd like.
Okay, is this one on? Yes. Okay. I like to walk. So can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Senator Ward, thank you. Thank you for inviting us here. My name is Sherri Zendry. I am Administrative Counsel with the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. That's the state agency for environmental quality in Arizona. This is Beth Hager. She is our Governmental Affairs Liaison, also with the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. I really appreciate everybody coming out this evening. I know 5:00 is kind of a rough time for folks, so I'm glad to see so many people out here. I want to make two announcements. First, I know that there's a lot of folks that have a lot of things to say. We do need to be respectful of each other. Please, can we put our telephones on vibrate? Please. And then the second thing I would like to let people know is there's a whole bunch of cameras around here, okay? For me, for Beth, Senator Ward, that's great. We're, you know, we're open for the public. If you are not interested in potentially being on camera, you may want to take a look at where the cameras are and move. Okay? I've got -- we've got at least three different sets here, one back there, one over there. I think at least two of them will most likely end up on the Internet. So there's your fair warning. So I had a couple of things that I was going to talk to you guys about. Mostly, I want to give you guys a chance to ask some questions and to let me know what's on your mind. The first thing I do need to let you guys know, though, I am not here to debate the science of aircraft engine emissions. I am not a scientist. I am an ADEQ Environmental Policy Specialist. I can talk to you about jurisdiction. I can talk to you about some of the processes in our programs, how things get done. I am not a scientist. So if you are here to hear some information about the science, the validity of aircraft engine emissions, I apologize. You will probably be disappointed. That's not what I'm here for. What I am here for, though, is to tell you where you can get some information, where you can make some complaints, where you can ask some questions. Part of the problem with this particular issue is that Arizona, the state of Arizona, and specifically the Department of Environmental Quality, has no jurisdiction over aircraft engine emissions. The standards for what can come out of an aircraft engine are developed by the United States Federal EPA. The Clean Air Act, Section 232, dictates that it is the EPA that will set those standards. The Clean Air Act then goes on to say that it's the Federal Department of Transportation that will enforce those, both federal agencies. Nowhere in there is there any room for a state agency. So it's really important for everybody to understand. Clean Air Act says the EPA creates the standards, the DOT enforces the standards. Now, the DOT enforces those standards through the Federal Aviation Administration. And I spent lots of time on their website in preparation for this, figuring out where you could file a complaint. And it was not easy, but I found it. So --
Do you want to write something?
No, that's okay. That's okay. So if you want to file a complaint with respect to the standards that EPA has created, EPA complains, and it's long, so we may have to turn it sideways, right? You know what? I'm going to let you write it. Okay, that's the EPA, and that's FAA. Okay. So, but it was not easy. It was absolutely not easy to find it, okay? So a complaint about the standards goes to EPA. A complaint about what you think is coming out of the airplanes goes to the Federal Aviation Administration. ADEQ -- yes, I have a question.
Do you guys cover the emissions out of being spray nozzles out of the plane? Not from the engine, but the spray nozzle. Do you guys control that?
So the question is whether or not ADEQ covers the spray nozzles out of airplanes. No, we have nothing to do with airplanes. ADEQ has nothing to do. Anything that has to do with an airplane is the Federal Aviation Administration. Yes, ma'am?
Do you not have something to do with automobile emissions?
We do have something to do with automobile emissions.
Is there another point of transportation that the aircraft --
So then the question is, why do we not have any authority with aircraft? Because the Clean Air Act specifically said we do not. You would have to ask the congressional folks that wrote the Clean Air Act back in 1970 or so. I have no idea. That's a very, very good question. I have no answer for you. We do -- ADEQ does have limited control over roadway, but we have no control over airlines. I think I saw him first.
My question is, if, let's say, for example, someone were dumping barrels of toxins into Lake Havasu, okay? And they dumped a 55-gallon drum every single day, would you have jurisdiction in that mass?
Maybe.
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 And if they dumped it via airplane, you have no jurisdiction whatsoever over Lake Havasu's water being contaminated with poisons because it's out of an airplane. Is that correct?
No.
But if somebody dumped it, you may have it. If I dumped it out of a barrel into Lake Havasu, then you may have jurisdiction. But if it's dropped out of an airplane, you don't have jurisdiction. Is that correct?
I believe, under my understanding of the Clean Air Act, that that would in fact be correct. However, to my knowledge, no one has actually dumped anything out of an airplane for me to test that theory that obviously.
I speak about just about every day. And we even have, just for your information, HR 2977, which is a congressional bill from 2001. If you look at the next to last page, it is highlighted there where the Congress is admitting that chemtrails do exist and that they are an aerial weapon. Now, that is an admission from Congress. There's no denial that chemtrails exist.
I am not here, like I said, I'm not here to debate existence, nonexistence, or technical merit. I am simply here to explain what the state of Arizona can do. That's all I'm here for.
That's what I'm heading with it. We know chemtrails exist. That's admitted by Congress.
We know that chemtrails do exist because Congress has admitted it, okay? You've seen the bill right there. The problem that I think would fall under your jurisdiction is what exactly is being sprayed from the chemtrails, and is it or is it not hazardous to the people, air, and water of the state of Arizona? That's my question. That's where the investigation from neutral parties needs to come from.
So prior to coming out here, I asked my compliance folks in our various programs what the status was, and I've been assured that the air quality and the water quality here meets all of the standards. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name's Al DeChico. I live in Golden Valley. And I understand that this is a federal issue. I understand that from speaking to the governor's office, that they cannot or will not even make a statement about this. My question is, have you tested the rainwater? And if you haven't, have you seen the results of our rainwater tests? And also, are you aware that many of the people sitting in this room right here have very high levels of barium, aluminum, and strontium in their blood? People are getting sick and dying. And we want the ADEQ not just to give us a little speech today, but actually to maybe perhaps speak out against it if you know what's going on. And if not, I would suggest you do a lot more investigation. We've been doing it for years. So I'd like a comment on, one, the rainwater, what's in it? And, two, what's in our blood? And if it's not coming from geoengineering, is it your responsibility to investigate that and tell us where it is coming from? Thank you.
Okay, I got to write this down, because I don't know that I can remember everything. I'll be honest with you, sir. Hold on a second. What was your third question?
Soil. No, I didn't say soil, but that is an issue. My question is, can hair -- not the air, but --
Does the ADEQ have the ability to take a position on this and investigate it further and find out where these toxic metals are coming from that are in our rainwater and in our blood? Thank you.
Air. Well, I don't know anything about air.
We do, we do, we do test air analyses.
Air.
Hair. Hair follicles. Okay? I do not know anything about the rainwater. I do not know anything about rainwater analyses. If anything has been sent to my agency, I can take a look at it and get information back to folks if you want to leave a name. I do not know anything about rainwater. Like I said, I'm not a science person. Blood and hair analyses, those you need to talk to your physicians about. And your physicians should be able to direct you as to what to do.
No, they don't. They have questions. No.
They cannot.
No, they have no idea what to do with this.
The Department of Environmental Quality has no medical professionals. So that is completely outside our area. So our position on any kind of medical condition or any kind of medical issue always has been and always will be to speak to your medical professionals. We are not medical professionals. As far as soil samples go, I do not know if there have been any soil samples collected in the area. Generally, unless we have a remediation project going on in an area, we don't collect soil samples. The reason that we don't collect soil samples, unless there's something going on, which also brings me to our ability to investigate, is if we don't have jurisdiction over a particular area, we also don't have jurisdiction to spend money on a particular item or a particular area. So the legislature gives us authority to regulate things and allows us to spend money on those things. If we do not have the authority to regulate something, we don't have the authority to collect samples or to spend money investigating it.
How does your organization or your --
How do you test the air?
How do we test the air?
Yeah.
Again, I'm not a science person. I know that we have air monitors that draw air in, and filters are collected. I don't know where they are. I'm not a science person.
My name is Diane Lane. I'm from Kingman. I'd like to know exactly what would initiate an investigation, or a soil sample, or blood or hair sample. What would it take to instigate you people to do that?
We would have to have a release of some sort that's under our jurisdiction. And she's been waiting. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. I am assuming you do have scientists in your organization. Is that correct?
We do, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm one of the -- my name is Michelle Arnett, and I'm from Bullhead City. And I'm one of the several who have had my blood tested because I was getting sick and I didn't know why. And I did go to my doctor, and he had some question on how to order these specific tests for heavy metals. And when the results came back and they were really out of line, he said he had never seen anything like it in his life, and he didn't have a clue what to do about it. And then the bottom line was, he said, "I think you're just going to have to live with it, and I want to be healthy." So just out of curiosity, how many of you in here have had your blood tested? Raise your hands. Okay, thank you.
We've got a couple of folks in the back. I won't lose you, I promise. We'll try to get to all of you.
Is it your belief that federal law trumps state law in all cases, even if it's unconstitutional? And I'm Dan Kemp. I'm from Henderson, Nevada.
It is my belief that Article 6 of the Constitution does preempt state law in this particular situation.
Is that the -- was that general welfare clause?
That's the supremacy clause.
Supremacy clause.
That's the supremacy clause. And in this particular area of aviation regulation, the federal government has fully occupied the field, and there is no room for state --
So all federal law trumps state law according to the supremacy clause? Is that your belief? What if you were wrong on that?
I don't believe that that works across the board. I'd have to --
And you don't have to be an attorney to --
I'd have to take a look, I'd have to take a look at the case law. I don't, that's not --
Just look at the Constitution. You know, you don't have to be a constitutional attorney to interpret the Constitution. It's pretty plain language. And so that's kind of a wrong-headed thinking, I think, you have there. That is shared by a lot of people, not just yourself. So that's what, that's kind of what we're butting our heads against in meetings like this. So that's all I got.
Beth? Beth, we've got two folks over here.
Todd Howard from Kingman. I understand your skepticism, I really do. But I have a couple of questions for you, not to, not to come up against you, but to try to get your institute, your agency moving. The ADEQ --
Yes, sir. ADEQ.
Has a mission statement, does it not? It was created for a purpose.
It does.
Can you tell us what that is?
If I can read it, I certainly can. Our mission statement is to lead -- oh, I'm sorry, to protect and enhance public health and the environment in Arizona.
Very good. Okay. My second question to you is this. Now, if these people have evidence, if they, if they have enough accumulated evidence to be of interest, can you tell us who to send it to to get an investigation going? Because if their health is in danger, that's within your mission statement. My third question to you is, if there is sufficient evidence to invoke your jurisdiction for the purposes of your mission statement, can the state of Arizona, through your office or through someone else, file that complaint against the federal government and get something So can you tell us who to send our evidence to? Who are these scientists in your department that we could send it to?
The problem is, we have no jurisdiction over this issue, so sending it to our scientists won't help. We can't do anything.
Why do you not have jurisdiction if your mission statement has to do with public health, and they have evidence that their health may be being affected, not by engine emissions, but apparently by a deliberate spraying effort? When does your mission statement bring in your jurisdiction in the interest of the people of the, of the state that you're apparently intended to protect? If you can't do that, what is the purpose of your department? So who do we send our evidence to to get our public servants moving?
They can't do a job of abolishing it.
Can I rush her to bathroom?
Certainly.
No, that's, that's a valid, that's a valid question. And I'm honestly not sure who you could send them to, because we would not have jurisdiction. Okay? So I would send you back, I would send you back to the EPA or to the FAA, because we would not have jurisdiction over such an issue.
Thank you. My name's Corey Gunnels, and I came here from Prescott, Arizona. I moved here about four years ago from Minneapolis area. I have two questions. Senator Ward, thank you for agreeing to, you know, carry on with this meeting. In my family, I have people who have been in the House of Representatives, lawyers, was married for many, many years to a physician. And I hope I can speak to this well. It's an emotional thing for me. In my family, I've had five people die from brain tumors in the last 10 years, and two friends. And when I look at this issue, like any of us, I always remind people that at one time we don't know, we don't see. And we look up, and we wonder. And if we are responsible, we look into it. When we look into it and we do our research, we find certainty. I'm speaking, when I was driving today, I, I'm going to back up and say, I didn't know what I wanted to say today, but then I remembered I could speak for people who can't. And I think if I looked back, there are probably many people sitting here who feel the same, who have people in their lives that maybe are gone, who can't speak, so they speak for them. Dr. Russell Blaylock is a retired neurosurgeon. He is world-renowned. He's very concerned about this issue. He sees aluminum in a nanoparticulate size as extremely worrisome. So, Senator Ward, thank you again. But I want to know why the EPA and FAA aren't here. And I, you know, Sherri, you're doing a good job. Thank you. But you don't have jurisdiction.
I don't.
So I feel like we're in a quandary.
Yeah, that's why we get your help. Oh, you heard me. If you want to help. I just want to, I just want to say that, for me, as an Arizona State Senator, I only have connections with the people within Arizona who I can bring to you as experts. I do have great connections with Congressman Gosar and with many people in our congressional delegation as well. Perhaps we can get them, at some point, to bring someone from the EPA or from the FAA or from the DOT to come and speak to a group such as this. But this is just, you know, this is the beginning of information and education and the exchange, so that you all can let these guys know what, what is concerning you and why. So this is the first step. I know it's frustrating to go in little increments at a time, and everyone wishes we'd have big sweeping change. But believe me, when we have big sweeping change, that's when we get a lot of unintended consequences. So this is the first little, you know, baby step bite out of a problem that's very concerning to everybody in this audience.
I got to go to this side for a couple minutes. So yes, go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is Luca Zan, and I live in Golden Valley. First of all, thank you for driving all the way here. I know it's very hot. Thank you, Senator, for starting to move the ball rolling. As she said, we need to do small steps. But let me tell you, more important, I want to thank you and all the people that have been pushing this issue the last few years. Because without this, no senator, no state would have even cared about all this. So we must thank ourselves, and I really mean it, okay? I appreciate you coming. I understand already, according to different newspapers, that pretty much you're here just to make some statement of jurisdiction. I read here, for example, Arizona Department of Environmental Quality will make a short presentation at the meeting, and the Department lack of regulatory authority over any type of chemical spray, according to Department Communications Director Marshuffer. Question is, I wish, since this is our tax dollar, this room cost, electricity, air conditioning, your time, I'm sure you know for free, and we are the one pretty much pay for all this, you could have sent us a fax or maybe an email, because if they're really what the state is telling us, that pretty much you have no jurisdiction. And according also to another article, even if you would admit that there is a problem coming from this type of environment, we're talking about the airplanes, you still couldn't do anything. I wish there was something like more, maybe some scientists, because I tell you something, I'm not even going to approach this from a point of view of geoengineering, weather modification. I'm not even talking about that. I'm talking about there is a real serious crisis, health crisis, documented officially, I would like to serve you right now, not as legal, but as documented, already sent the register to the governor, to Senator Farmer, Senator Gould, for the former representative of our district. There are like at least 12 blood tests here, created by official laboratory with real doctors, MD. And all these blood tests came back with a high extreme level of barium, some aluminum. I'm talking about levels that go above more than 1,000 percent. So I forget about the airplanes, the aliens, and anything else. This is a crisis. We are people that are suffering, and we don't know where this source is from, the barium. I tell you something, we did also some extra jobs, since we understand the state is kind of bureaucratic before it moves, and a former state representative -- A former state representative, Nancy McLean, told us the weed people in Golden Valley, weed water hole. First of all, these tests are very from different parts of the county, some also are from Phoenix. And I do not water hole, I got my own well, and I tested the well, and the water is clean and pure. Food, the last meeting at the county a few years ago, they told us that we get it from food. We do not live in a commune, like in Russia, okay? Everybody got their own homes, and everybody grow or buy their own food. So there are a lot of things that I think is a state duty to investigate. I want to bring you here today officially, ma'am, this is for you. There are blood tests with names, some they're being blacked, but they're real blood tests that deserve attention, and it's your duty, moral and legal duty. You're on the record.
Thank you.
This is a serious problem. And you're pretty much saying right now that your, your agency, your, your hands are tied, and everything's out of your jurisdiction?
Yes, sir.
And you spoke earlier, you have standards? I'm curious to know when those standards were set, and when do you renew them and do new tests to see what they're dumping on us?
So as I mentioned earlier, the standards for aircraft engine emissions are developed by EPA. I do not off the top of my head know when they were last reviewed. That's a very good question. But EPA develops those standards.
If, if we could keep for, for handraisers, just so we can make sure we get to everyone, that would be helpful. Thanks.
Okay, first of all, my name is Deborah, and I'm from Mesa, Arizona. This is not emissions from an airplane. That's completely disinformation. It's, yeah, it doesn't come from engines. This comes from spray nozzles that are retrofitted on airplanes. And I want to know-
That's right. My question is, if you don't have any jurisdiction over the air quality, over the air, when they fly up in the air and they dump this on us, who has jurisdiction over the generators while they're on the ground?
We have jurisdiction over the ground generators, yes.
Okay. So who's testing those? And the airplanes that emit these while they're on the ground, before they fly up in the sky?
She has jurisdiction. And I'm gonna talk about-
Yeah, I think that all of us, for a long time, have known that we're being sprayed. This is not contrails. Contrails are very short. Chemtrails go along the sky. And when you see these planes go from one end of what you see to the other, and back again, and back again, and back again, and you have sometimes as many as 10 planes doing this at one time. And, you know, we have gotten a hold of Jan Brewer's office and, and the senators throughout the United States. And in Jan Brewer's office, finally, they said, oh, well, you need to do the FAA. We got a hold of them, nothing. They said, there's nothing, it's contrails. So then we go back to Jan Brewer's office, and no one will talk again. And really, frankly, we're not the only people. There are people all over the place that have sent information in. Now, you're here, and you're inadequate to be able to take care of this for us, but whoever can, anybody who's in a place of power, like Kelly Ward, or you in your office, you need to really push this, because really, we are being sprayed like we're bugs, and it's really not okay.
Okay, we've got one more up here, and then we're gonna have to move to the other side. We'll come back.
I have a question for both of you. I like your own opinion and personal thoughts. Working for a quality control agency, as you guys do, when, in Phoenix, when you go outside and you see, you must see trails everywhere on certain days, what are your thoughts? Don't you think that, hey, something needs to be done with the air? Is this normal?
My daughter did ask me about them the other day. She said it looked like a Tic Tac Toe board. I'm not a scientist.
I moved to Lake Havasu six years ago, and five years ago, I started seeing these chemtrails fly over. It's been constant since, five years this fall. Okay? This is nanoparticle aluminum barium strontium. As Russell Blaylock says, it goes straight up your olfactory nerve into your brain. They're finding all kinds of rhinol disintegration, degeneration of our brain. It's, we're breathing it in here. It's an irritant, the Navy has done, and the Air Force has done nanoparticle exposure levels on rats. It causes pulmonary fibrosis, macrophage, inflammatory processes in our bodies. You're smirking the whole time here, telling us and just black, stonewalling us this entire time, saying you can't do anything. Our air is crap. You know, I, it was clear five years ago, now it's a constant haze. We're breathing in this every single breath we take, all year long, all night long. This stuff is so small, it cannot be filtered out of HEPA filters, because we're a couple of orders of magnitude smaller than a HEPA filter. It's like, I, I am so angry. I'm, I'm a chiropractor. My, my job is trying to take care of people, and we're being sprayed to death, and you're just doing nothing about it. So it's like, get someone who does something.
I'd like to make a suggestion. My name is Walter Sparl, Lake Havasu. In Arizona, we are unique in that we have a group of scientists that can tell you, while this material is in the air, with a spectrometer, specifically what it is as it's coming out of the back of the airplane, whether it's from spray nozzles or, or the engines. It's the best in the world. They have all the equipment there. We're a community. People do favors for each other. They will do a favor for you and do a spectral analysis of that. Now, the next step is very significantly more difficult, because everybody knows the federal government is behind it, the federal government is doing it. I agree, you do not maintain subject-mannered jurisdiction over these kinds of events with the federal government. The federal government does these things primarily under the guise of national security. I'm gonna take you back a few years. When President Eisenhower left office, he said, beware of the military-industrial complex. Shortly after that, people started dying in San Francisco. Cancer. Cancer was an epidemic. Nobody realized cancer was communicable. Somebody sneezes next to you and you catch cancer. The statutory time limit on when the government can keep secrets from the people is 35 years. 35 years later, it was revealed, they intentionally released radioactive material into the atmosphere specifically to count the death rate of people. It was done for a national security project. The project was, if an atomic bomb ever went off here, they wanted to find out what the fallout would do to all the people. The only thing, so, all the people who died, I mean, after this was, was divulged, the people who were still alive were their family members, and they lost interest. I mean, over time, the government wins. They, they beat you through attrition. For the last 40 years, there has been a law in this country that very few people know about. And the law is gonna sound stupid to you, but this honestly is the real law. If the President of the United States declares a state of national emergency, he and all of his people gain immunity. So if you sue the federal government and you go into the courtroom, the judge lacks subject-mannered jurisdiction over any evidence submitted by the, by the president during a time of national security, as declared by him. So in other words, there's hardly any way you can, gonna win a lawsuit if he makes that This is a very difficult problem. I have, I litigated that issue for 20 years, and the Supreme Court agreed with that stupid I have studied this for so many years, the only solution I can, I mean, short of physical violence, the only solution I can come up with is, you gotta get rid of all those stupid people in Washington, DC.
I live in Kingman, out in Valley Vista there. I have a question for the senator. In your opinion, do you think we're a bunch of nuts? Or what is your true opinion of this whole phenomenon? I, you know, I moved from Michigan about 12 years ago, and one of my neighbors out in Valley Vista was telling me about this spraying stuff, and we affectionately nicknamed him Jet Poop Bob, you know? But, you know, when I first moved here, for the first few years, day after day after day, crystal-clear blue skies. We loved it. It is no more, Senator.
I have to say, you guys, I, I mean, I love all of you guys. I don't think that you're nuts. I think that you're concerned. You have concerns about things that are affecting you. Many of you have lab work that shows abnormalities that you can't find out why, and so you're reaching out-
To anyone.
To me. Not to me as a doctor, but to me as, as your representative, so that I can bring people who are experts to talk to you about things that, that they do, that connecting you, that I mean, they're trying to connect you with the federal government by giving you the information. I will, I'll pledge to that, I will talk to someone from Gosar or somebody from his staff to see if there's a way to get another meeting going. And, you know what? You're reaching out to try to find out what can be done to help you. So, and there are some things that ADEQ does have jurisdiction over. They don't have jurisdiction over the skies, they don't, you know, they don't have jurisdiction over Reforming Clean Water Act. But they do have jurisdiction over the water, air, the water, air and soil quality in Arizona. And so that's something that might be able to be explored, so that if the testing isn't being done in our area, I know that there is testing done in Kingman Air Force, and also Almiaca, and those sites that have been tested have been found to be within normal limits. They have been below the limits. So there may be other places that need to be investigated, and that's something that I'll talk to these guys about, how do we go about going to specific places to, to check, so that either we can find out what's wrong, or reassure people if there isn't something.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm not an aeronautical engineer, or scientist, or a climatologist, but we live in an area with 5%, 8%, 10% humidity. If this is normal contrails, that stuff doesn't fall down in the mountains, you know? We're not living in the Blue Ridge area, you know, North Carolina. You look at some days when it goes back and forth, and it just falls right down on the mountains. It's just not normal. Just start looking up, Senator. Look up at the skies. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you all for coming. I know you all have valid concerns, and I'm sure a lot of you have good, solid evidence. But what I want to talk to you about is, no matter what you present here tonight, it's going to fall on deaf ears. Now, they've told you this is a jurisdictional matter. And the reason I wanted this nice lady here to point out the mission statement of the ADEQ is, you are that jurisdiction. Do you understand? They have no jurisdiction about what comes out of the back of an airplane, until it affects your health. Now, you have to, listen to me, what you have to do is, you have to get your evidence together, and you have to make a claim. You have to file a complaint, and you've got to be able to substantiate it. For any state agency-defined jurisdiction, there's got to be a claim of damage. Do you understand that? It's very simple law. I guarantee you that the state agencies have jurisdiction when they want so many bucks for you running a stop sign. They're, they're, they're just happier than hell to collect money. But if you want to get them moving for your benefit, then you have to understand it, you are that jurisdiction, and you have to set that jurisdiction in motion, get your public servants off top dead center. Get a claim together, get your evidence together, get organized. Please, please do not be so naive as to think you're gonna make anybody up there care. They're your public servants, get them in motion. Get your claim together, get moving. Do not be naive.
Okay, I think we're gonna take two or three on this side, and then move back to that side.
We'll have to move back.
Okay.
First, I'd like to make a plain statement of fact. No matter what anybody thinks, the United States Constitution is the supreme law of the land, and it will be obeyed by everybody, including the ADEQ. Next is a little bit of an opinion. We had hard questions here. I don't understand why the ADEQ would send somebody that looks more like a lawyer, when we really need a scientist, maybe doctors, somebody that can answer the hard questions, and not just shuffle us away, and then you go on about your business. And the other thing is, this is a representative form of government, and we, the people, are the ones that you represent. And I'm not seeing a real good job being done. I hope we don't have to remind everybody, the last voice is us, and we are ruled by the consent of the governed. And if we don't start getting back a little bit closer to what the people want, we may have to remove that consent, and even remove some of the, the public officials that represent us. I do appreciate Kelly Ward for taking our questions, but how about if we do this again? We get a little bit more serious about it? Instead of lawyers and mouthpieces that can answer questions and cover for people, we start talking about the truth. There is something going on there, and I'm not the only one that's kind of upset about it. So how about if we do this again? We get a little bit more to the bottom of the truth, and bring some of your scientists, and let's see some of the proof. And incidentally, I got one last story, and then I'll return this microphone. You know, in the early 1950s, when jet airplanes would fly over the house in West Virginia, my dad, who was a doctor, by the way, we would go out, and he would explain the difference between the jets and the propeller planes. I understood about the condensation trail way back in the 1950s. And, you know, I've been watching those planes in the sky ever since. And as my, my memory serves me, about 1990, when I was going around exercising at the park over here, I looked up in the sky, and I says, what in the heck is that? I've never seen that before. My dad was still alive then. I remember calling him a day or two later, talking to him on the phone. Have you ever seen anything like this? Well, I'm 60 years old, and I've watched the sky for most of that 60 years, and I'm telling you, I don't need to be a scientist. There's something changed. I don't know physics. If I drop this microphone behind my back, I don't need to be a master in physics to know it's not gonna strike the ceiling, it's gonna strike the floor. So the next time we have one of these meetings, let's get a little bit more serious about this, and bring in some of the people that can answer these questions, and the people that have the power, like Kelly Ward, to- that have the power, like Kelly Ward, to take it a step farther. We start actually getting to the bottom of this. We start reminding our elected officials, we are concerned, and we want something done. And we're not going to take no for an answer much longer. Thank you.
First of all, I want to say, you don't look like a scientist or an attorney. You look like me. You look like all of us. And you mentioned that you have a daughter, and I don't know if you have children yet or not, but I think that like us, regular people, you would care if this was going to somehow affect your children as well. I moved here in '85, and the beautiful blue skies that I saw every day when I opened up my blind were just enough to make your heart jump for joy. But in the late '90s, I looked up, and to my surprise, I saw these crazy things going on in the sky. And like your daughter, I was like, "What's that?" And I started counting. I stopped counting at 26 lines that crisscrossed and went different ways, but the 26 that I could identify individually. And every year, I've seen it get worse and worse. Now, my barium level is 280, when it should be less than 10. I think I'm kind of the poster child from Mahawee County, but I don't live in Golden Valley. I don't live in Kingman. So I really don't shop or eat the same things. I don't do anything that they do similarly. I also don't go in the river, which is something that the Health Department mentioned, because I'm embarrassed to say it, but I can't swim. And so I stay under the river. I have Crohn's disease, so I don't eat all the nuts that they were referring to, because my body just won't digest things like that. But I'm pleading with you, ladies. Help us. Join us, because you too have skin in this game. Look up. I know that when we walk around in our daily lives, we're too busy looking to where we're going, so we don't trip over something, or we're in a hurry to get where we're going, or we're driving, and we're avoiding other cards. But just stop and look up, and ask why, and help us. Once, whatever the source is, let's say it's an airplane, just for speculation, once it leaves that airplane and it lands on Arizona, the ground, our airspace, our plants, our trees, our people, then doesn't it become your interest, not even then?
It's an airplane.
Okay. Well, but after, it's not in the airplane anymore.
It's still an airplane.
Okay, thank you.
So this white hazy sky, no ability to analyze it.
And the weather says it's a clear day.
Yeah, no, it's, I live up on a hill, okay? I see the horizon. And again, you know, like, I moved here six years ago, the sky was beautiful and clear. In 2009, it started to get sprayed all the time. It is a white blanket, hazy muck, all the time. It doesn't matter if we're being currently sprayed or not, it's always there. It's always there. You can't analyze that?
There is...
Plus, as I said, this is nanoparticle. Once this genie's out of the bottle, it's not going back in. And the plants, there's like, what, Rosalind Peterson is a, you know, agricultural analysis analyst for California. 50 million hectares of trees have died because of the fogging out, clouding out. They are not even making enough photosynthesis to maintain themselves, plus the toxicity of the aluminum, and things are causing their roots to shut down, so they're not even up taking water. This is a problem, kids. This is a big problem. This is death to plant life, death to bacteria, death to, I mean, right now, the species extinction rate is 150 to 200 a day, 73,000 a year. This is not something that you can sneeze off and brush aside. If you have kids, you should care. If you have lungs or a brain, you should care. This is toxicity that is in our air, every breath we take in this room. Just because you can't see it doesn't mean it's not here. It's nanoparticle. It's toxic. Aluminum is a toxic protoplasmic poison. It stifles numerous enzyme systems in all your cells. It passes the blood-brain barrier. It degrades the blood-brain barrier. It degrades the tight junction cells in your intestines. It causes leaky gut syndrome. It's causing a host of problems. And you look so bored here. You're just smirking the whole time, and it's like a big joke to you. This is important. This, we're, our country, our country is being poisoned, and nothing is going to be done about it.
Hi, my name's Angelique. I live in Clark County, Nevada. One thing I want to make clear here that hasn't been said is that these are not, these programs are not exclusive to just our country. These are global. This is a photograph, a satellite photograph, of our planet. This is not contrails, you guys. This doesn't happen with contrails. I also want to capitalize on what you just said. We've talked a lot about the detrimental effects of geoengineering on human health. Everything is dying right now. The birds, the bees, the bats, the fish, the trees. I've got a report with me here that is a 29-day global report on fish die-offs. We caught a blip on the news about the Monterey, California fish die-off on May 17th of this year. We did not hear that there was four other states in our nation that were having massive fish die-offs. In that 29 days, from April 19th to May 17th, there was 33 events around this planet, all of them involving millions of fish at 19 different locations on our planet. Everything is dying right now. Now, with all due respect, Senator Ward, I understood what you were saying about taking baby steps, because that's necessary in the political arena, when you're trying to accomplish something. We don't have time to take baby steps. We need to take huge steps, huge steps, if we stand any chance of doing anything about this.
We need to move over to... Okay, but then I need to let the other side.
No problem. One thing to add, again, I'm Corey Gennell, and I'm from Prescott, Arizona. I live about 3,000 feet from the base of Granite Mountain. Last year at this time, we had the Doocy fire, and then immediately after, the Yarnell Hill fire. And I'm on the Board of Directors of a community organization for Williamson Valley. 19 of our Granite Mountain hotshots died, as you know, last June 30th. So in a couple days, my town is, wow, you know, they're getting ready for it. There is a gentleman in California, Redding, named Mark McAndlish. He's an aviation expert in chemtrails. He is saying that these nanoparticles are desiccants and fire accelerants. I talked to Tony Shaka, who was the Type 1 Incident Commander for our fire, meaning the Doocy. I also talked to the Forestry Service at an inter-agency fire meeting about three weeks ago. When I talked to the supervisor for the Forest Service about soil testing, he said, "I know exactly what you're talking about." So that's just one more serious matter.
My name is Alexandra Mae Hunter. I have traveled here today from Phoenix, where I reside. I would like to thank Senator Kelly Ward for hosting the meeting this evening, and thanks to all the people who came here to participate. No other senator, be it state or federal level, has conducted a meeting of this nature with a state environmental agency. This is a precedent-setting event. And I thank Dr. Ward for having this forum, so the public can present to both her and the ADEQ fact-based evidence that they may not have been aware of, and that they need to be aware of, so that they are able to do the job they are paid to do by the taxpayers. The Senator has taken a sacred oath to protect the people, and under the law, it is the affirmatively stated duty and obligation incumbent upon the ADEQ to protect the atmosphere, no matter who the source is that is emitting toxic air pollution. I have prepared and brought with me today a packet of fact-filled historical evidence and data by both the government itself, agencies thereto, as well as leading credible academic scholars and scientists for the Senator to review. Some of the documents I have brought are, one, the Congressional Research Service Report on Geoengineering Governance and Technology Policy dated November 26, 2013; two, the May 10th, 2010, report by the Belport Group, a Belgian environmental watchdog group titled Case Orange: Contrail Science: Its Impact on Climate and Weather Manipulation Programs Conducted by the United States and Its Allies; three, a binder titled Government Documents: Link Global Warming to Advanced Military Climate Modification Technology; four, a United States Air Force research paper titled Weather as a Force Multiplier: Owning the Weather by 2025, dated August 1996; and five, an official United States Air Force chemistry manual, Department of Chemistry, Chemistry 131 Manual, from the fall of 1990, titled Chemtrails. In addition, two leading American medical doctors are on the record stating the program is happening, and there are huge detrimental health issues related to the chemicals being used. They are the neurosurgeon, medical researcher, and former military M.D., Dr. Russell Blaylock, and Dr. Rema Labo, M.D., whose husband is retired Major General Stubblebine, and who is on the record affirmatively stating the program is currently happening. I will only be able to briefly touch upon some of the major points, history, and law supporting the case that geoengineering is in full force and effect, and has been for at least 40 years. It is harmful to both human and ecosystem health, and we, the people, and the entire ecosystem are the collateral damage of this covert, but in plain sight, program-science experiment. I do not consent to this currently-in-effect, actual and present program. An injury and harm does exist, and I am here now, on the record, in this public forum setting, giving actual legal notice of such. I do not consent. The CIA and NASA have both admitted to utilizing geoengineering. President George W. Bush's Director of Science and Technology, John H. Marburger III, in his December 13, 2005 letter to Texas Senator Kay Bailey Hutchinson, specifically stated that a whole host of concerns, including legal, liability, research, and national security, needed to be addressed to gain a better understanding of the full range of possible implications before the government would undertake, quote, "national, a national research program," unquote. An emphasis added, because he was just talking about a research program, not implementing an actual program. On January 1st, 2011, John Holdren, the Science and Technology Director under President Obama, completely removed all oversight of the geoengineering issue, which was being conducted by the House of Representatives, Science and Technology Subcommittee during 2010. Ladies and gentlemen, there is no transparency of this program, and the national security of the United States, its people being its most precious asset, are in grave and serious danger. As Director Marburger intimated, cautioned, and advised, we are under a dangerous aerial assault by unmarked airplanes daily. A major part of scientific fact is based upon observation. In the sky above Phoenix, on an almost daily basis, I visually observe completely unidentifiable unmarked airplanes that are emitting aerosol plumes of matter that spread, descend, and saturate the atmosphere. From my home, I have a very clear vantage point of the commercial air traffic pattern for Sky Harbor Airport. I am able to visually identify the commercial airplanes without any visual aids, such as binoculars. None of the commercial airplanes are emitting these persistent chemical plumes, none of them. All of the commercial airliners are flying in the same exact troposphere as the unmarked airplanes. They ascend and descend through elevations and altitudes on their routes. As commercial airplanes fly into Phoenix from the west, they are at the same exact altitude as the unmarked airplanes in the designated airspace allotted for the commercial airplane routes. None of them, I repeat, none of the commercial airplanes are emitting the trails like the unmarked airplanes are doing. Moreover, upon closer scrutiny, as evidenced by close-up photography and videotape, the unmarked airplanes are emitting these emissions from specifically retrofitted nozzles on the tails of the airplanes, and also specifically retrofitted nozzles on the wings. With regard to the scripted dialogue by the ADEQ found at their website on airplanes dispersing, quote, "contrails," unquote, which they state are merely vapor trails, scientific and engineering facts contradict that story. The fact is that today's airplanes, with the minor exception of a very few high-powered military fighter jets, are all fitted with high-bypass turbofan jet engines that are incapable of emitting contrails. And as I stated above, the unmarked airplanes emitting this air pollution is not coming from jet engines. The source of the persistent dispersment is from retrofitted nozzles on either the wings or tails of the aircraft. The state of Arizona has both the authority and the power to protect the atmosphere, and it's delegated that power to the ADEQ pursuant to Title 49-104A, Subsections 1 through 10. Section 10 specifically states, "The ADAQ is to provide for the prevention and abatement of all water and air pollution, including that related to particulates, gases, dust, vapors, noise, radiation, odor, nutrients, and heated liquids." Under Title 49-422A, Subsection 3A, "The Department may, with any, with regard to any source of air contaminants, to monitor, sample, or perform other studies to quantify emissions of air contaminants or levels of air pollution that may be attributable to that source, if the Director determines that monitoring, sampling, or other studies are necessary to determine the effects of the source of the air pollution." Under Title 49.421, "The legal definitions," ladies and gentlemen, "of both air contaminants and air pollution are as follows. Air contaminants include smoke, vapors, charred paper, dust, soot, grime, carbon, fumes, sulfuric acid mist aerosols, aerosol droplets, odors, particulate matter, windborne matter, radioactive materials, or noxious chemicals, or any other material in the outdoor atmosphere. Air pollution means the presence in the outdoor atmosphere of one or more air contaminants or combinations thereof in sufficient quantities, which either alone or in connections with other substances, substances, by reason of their concentration and duration, are or tend to be injurious to human, plant, or animal life, cause damage to property, or unreasonably interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property of a substantial part of a community, or obscure visibility, or which in any way would degrade the quality of the ambient air below the standards established by the Director." And finally, Title 49.401-01, "The legal definitions of adverse effects to human health and adverse environmental effects are as follow. Adverse effects to the human health means those effects that result in or significantly contribute to an increase in mortality, or an increase in serious irreversible or incapacitating reversible illness, including adverse effects that are known to be or may reasonably be anticipated to be caused by substances that are acutely toxic, chronically toxic, carcinogenic, mutagenic, tetragenic, neurotoxic, or cause of, causes of reproduction, reproductive dysfunction. Adverse environmental effects means any significant and widespread adverse effect that may reasonably be anticipated on wildlife, aquatic life..." be anticipated on wildlife, aquatic life, or other natural resources, including adverse impacts on populations of endangered or threatened species, or significant degradation of environmental quality over broad areas. The state of Arizona's duty is ongoing and continuous, requiring the state to take into account and adjust to current conditions and act in light of changing circumstances and new information, so to ensure adequate protection of the atmosphere for this and future generations. One of the chemical constituents under serious consideration for, quote, "proposed geoengineering programs" is aluminum oxide, according to the unilateral geoengineering workshop at the Council on Foreign Affairs in David Keith from their 2010 AAS meeting on geoengineering. Aluminum oxide causes birth or developmental effects, brain and nervous system effects, and reproduction and fertility problems, as noted by the Environmental Working Group. Many of the long list of geoengineering patents owned, for the most part, by the major military-industrial complex companies such as Raytheon, exactly match the chemical constituents of aluminum, barium, and strontium, found in sample tests of water, rain, soil, botany, and human blood and hair samples. Many of these patents are for nano-sized particulates, which are not recognized on instrumentation-monitor devices in use by most environmental agencies. This instrumentation is not calibrated to identify a nano-sized particulate.
Hello, my name is Phyllis Trapp. We're from Havasu. I'm sorry we were a little late. We had trouble finding the building. Anyway, I wrote a letter to the editor on March 7th. Letter to the editor, News Herald, in Havasu. And Kelly, we emailed you that website called, and I'm saying this because I don't, we may have missed something in the very beginning. The website is, what on earth are they spraying? I guess, what in the world? Thank you. What in the world or what on, what in the world are they spraying? All the information is in there. A lot of what's been said has come from that website. So anyway, the News Herald did not publish my letter. I want to get information out. I understand that colloidal silver is effective in helping us heal. I went to the doctor recently and was told that I had chronic bronchitis. I've never had that in my life. I've always maintained good health. Anyway, sinuses continually dripping, coughing, shoot. Anyway, that's what they're calling chemflu. Chemtrail flu. So anyway, colloidal silver, please go ahead and check it out, use it, don't overuse it. And I'm happy to hear about the wine and the hydrogen peroxide. That's very helpful. God bless. Please help us. Tell us how we can attack this, how we can get some answers and get things changed. This is a wrong that needs to be made right and needs to be exposed. Thank you.
Hi, I want to thank you, Dr. Ward, for holding this. And my question is for you. Based on recent Supreme Court's decisions concerning state rights, wouldn't there be some piece of legislation that you might be able to introduce, based on testimony you've heard here today concerning this situation?
They told me I had to come and answer at this microphone. So I don't know. I'll just say I don't know. You guys know that I have been, over the two years that I've been your state senator, fighting for restoration of the proper balance between the states and the federal government because I think that there is much too much federal overreach. So if there were a way, I mean, we, I'm open. I mean, I introduce legislation for constituents all the time. It's not my legislation. A lot of times, I'm getting things from people. So if it's something that can be done in Arizona statute, I'm always willing to entertain that. With this particular issue, I think it's going to be very difficult because unless you get away from the chemtrail issue that you all are so passionate about, talking about our environmental quality, I think, can go farther in terms of making sure that there aren't any public health issues that are out there with our water, our soil, or our air. I don't know if that makes sense.
Okay, I appreciate that. You know, the thing of it is, like I say, the Supreme Court just reaffirmed states' rights. So what I'm seeing from this is the fact that we could, as a state, through our representatives, actually fight this. That's where I'm coming from. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Sharon, and I'm from Kingman. And again, I'd like to thank you, Senator Ward, and also you two lovely ladies. I apologize, I've forgotten your names. But really want to thank you for coming out. And as this very informed, organized woman said, this is an historic event. This is the first time, Senator Ward, that a legislature or any government, elected government official, is having a meeting with their constituents, with their community, their fellow citizens, their fellow human beings. And I just want to say, for everyone here, I don't think anyone meant any personal attacks. It's very frustrating to try to educate people or present this evidence to people who have never noticed it. But there are tons of people living on this planet that never look up at the sky. And so I hope that this is an eye-opener and a wake-up call because there's something very serious going on. And I just wanted to tell you all, I heard about this meeting at the last minute, otherwise I would have brought some important stuff for you that hasn't been mentioned here. And I do intend to get that together to forward to you. All I want to say is, one thing that wasn't mentioned in terms of all of this is our newest disease, Morgellans. Please Google it. And the other thing is, this will sound freaky-deaky, but if you know who Ray Kurzweil is, Google him, look up The Singularity. Bill Gates and other billionaires are supporting him and his organizations. And if you think any of this sounds crazy, wait till you see what he's talking about. He is now running Google. Please, just check it out. There's a documentary out on him, I believe it's called The Transcendent Man. And all of this ties together, and it is like it's science fiction, but there is no longer any thing as science fiction is what it looks like now. But please, Senator Ward, please look up Ray Kurzweil and what they call The Singularity, singularity.com. It's being sponsored by Bill Gates and all of them.
Thank you. I have talked to legislators from at least the western states, and I don't hear much from them with, as the level of concern that I have within my district, which is why I wanted to put this together for the people here. Now, I want to give Sheri and Beth, I want you guys to all give them a round of applause because they came and they did a good job and they took all your questions, even if they can't answer them. And I want to thank you guys personally, myself. I don't know if you want to say anything, say a wrap-up, and then I'm going to do one little wrap-up and we're going to get out.
I just wanted to thank you all for being on your best behavior.
Okay, so I wanted to also say, I'm willing to continue this conversation. You can always email me at my Senate email, which is kward@azleg.gov, or you can find me on Facebook at KellyWardForArizona, Kelly Ward, Kelly with an I because I care about the people. And you can message me right there on my page and I'll answer you. I don't really like attacks. I like conversations. I like discussions. I don't like name-calling. I like good back-and-forth conversation. So if you guys can give me that, I'm more than willing to continue the conversation with you there on Facebook, and I'll keep you posted there as to what's happening with getting more federal kind of people here to talk to you about these issues that are so concerning to you. Thank you all so much for coming, and I look forward to hearing from you. Bye-bye, have a great night.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate you.
Oh, thank you.